Good evening. I would like to call the Innerborough School District Public Meeting of the Board of School Directors, January seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, to order a roll call. Mrs. Caldwell?
Ms. Boyle? Mr. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Bernauer?
Here.
Mr. McGarvey?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chivone?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here. Could we have the invocation and the pledge, Mr. Evans?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Innerborough School District, and grant to this board in their deliberations this evening the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would just like to make an announcement. We will be having an executive session to discuss some legal matters after the board meeting. Okay, moving on to number two, the reports by Ariana and Samantha.
For the kindergarten academy, December was filled with many activities. The students had a great time at the Polar Express. The book fair was a tremendous success, a special thanks to parents that volunteered, and also to the parishioners of Saint Gabriel's Church for gathering clothes and toys for several families in need.
From Glen Olden School, the first grade students will travel to the Irvine Theater in Philadelphia on February eighth. They were going to see The Cat in the Hat. Our fourth graders will be going to the Grand Opera House in Wilmington, Delaware, on February twenty-first to see The Freedom Riders. Our second grade students will be holding a living history museum on February twenty-third at one-thirty P.M. They are to research and portray a famous person in history. Students and parents will be given the opportunity to interview the students and ask questions.
For Norwood School, in the spring, Norwood School Drama Club will present The Wizard of Oz, the Young Performers Edition, in conjunction with Tams Whitmark Music Library Incorporated. Norwood Drama Club members participated in a two-session audition workshop, and this production will include over fifty students. They hope to see everyone there. On December eleventh, Norwood eighth graders traveled to the Delaware County Technical School in Aston to learn about technical careers. The visit started with an activities fair where DCTF students set up stations highlighting various career paths. After the activities fair, the middle school students toured the Aston campus with DCTF students as their tour guides. They observed classrooms and met many DCTF students and teachers. This fall, sixteen first and second graders at Norwood School have spent eight Thursdays attending Crazy Eights Club with Ms. Kovach and Mrs. Urzillo. Crazy Eights is a recreational after-school math club that helps kids enjoy the math behind their favorite activities.
From Prospect Park School, the home and school sponsored two evening holiday dances for our third through fifth graders and our sixth through eighth. They were very well attended, and the children had a wonderful time. Our home and school hosted a book fair and were able to offer evening hours so parents could come to the buildings and stop by. And thanks to the generosity of the entire Prospect Park Community School, nearly forty families received gifts for the holidays. Prospect Park Town Watch sponsored eleven families. The Prospect Park staff joined the local businesses and Prospect Park families to sponsor nearly twenty completed families, and donated money to another family. Glen Olden School Congregational Church sponsored a family, and Prospect Park Home and School donated gift cards worth twelve hundred dollars to ten families. Our school's generosity continued right up until the last day of school in December. Our pro-Jama Day dress down raised nearly six hundred dollars from our students and staff to be donated to CHOP.
At Tinencum School, on December second, they had their Breakfast with Santa and Vendor Fair. The children had their pictures taken with Santa, and there were many vendors there for the holiday shopping. On December twelfth, Tinencum enjoyed the beautiful holiday music of the fourth and fifth grade band and chorus. On December twentieth, middle school students had their Agenda Reward trip. The students went to see Jumanji, Welcome to the Jungle, and then had lunch at the King of Prussia Mall.
From Innerborough High School, on December sixteenth, we had our winter concert, where the concert band, jazz band, concert choir, inter-tonics, and select choir had a very successful concert. The students performed numerous holiday tunes for the two-hundred-plus audience members. The following Friday, the choir had a coffee house, which students throughout the whole school performed acoustic music. Ms. Canals and Mr. Freel want to thank the administration and school board for their support. December sixteenth was our senior trip to New York City. The seniors enjoyed a visit to Ellen Stardust Diner, and they were entertained by the singing of the staff. They also had a chance to either see a Bronx Tale or the Madame's Wax Museum. December twenty-first, we had our blood drive. That was a great success. Eighty-eight units of blood were donated. A big thank you to Mr. Lavery and Mrs. Gardner for all your help. Our first annual staff versus student basketball game was a great success. We raised over five hundred dollars. That concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you both. Number three, recognition. Ms. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. January is School Directors' Recognition Month, which honors members of local boards for their commitment to provide quality public education for P.A. schoolchildren. School directors generously contribute their time and talents to the advancement and success of public education. This is a year-round commitment that goes under-recognized. On behalf of the administration and staff, I would like to thank our board members for their dedication to the Innerborough School District. Each and every board member volunteers their time to the board. It is a true commitment, and at times, they are putting in long hours to make decisions that are in the best interest of the district and our taxpayers. This month, each board member has been adopted, and there is a certificate in your folder, by a classroom from the school community that you represent. Over the next month, students will share with you samples of their work to show all the great things that they are learning in school. We are also placing plaques in the near future in the boardroom that will represent each of the four communities. All of the board members that have served time from the beginning of the Innerborough School District, the formation of the district, will be included on these plaques. More information to come on that. Also, our board members receive certificates on behalf of PSBA and handwritten cards from Mrs. Kelly Deulio's elementary gifted students. Thank you very much, board members.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. I know myself, I appreciate the handmade things by the children. I'm sure the rest of the board does also. Moving on to number four, Mr. Evans, public comment?
Yes, first we have Claire Riley.
Hello, I'm Claire Riley. I'm from Prospect Park. I am actually currently the president of the Innerborough Alumni, and I'm just here to let you know that Innerborough Alumni's Hall of Fame is open for nominations until February sixteenth. So please, if we can, I have a flyer. If we can link that up to the district's website, that would be great. That's all that I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next, Mr. Evans?
Ms. Phyllis Floyd.
Okay, I have several questions, so I'm going to ask them, and then if you can answer them, I'd appreciate it. In regards to the extended advertising for the vacant seat in Glen Olden for the school board member, if you could give me an update or the status on that. Then, eleven point two, there's a conference, January twenty-eighth to the thirty-first, to be held in Pittsburgh, and the cost, I don't know if it's per person and what all it includes, but it's to Pittsburgh for that many days. And the other thing is, is why is eight people attending? I can understand three of the individuals that are responsible for the curriculum and testing, why they would be going to this type of a conference. And then the other thing is, why is the superintendent, I brought this up, and Mr. Phelps said that he would take it under advisement, and, you know, did he discuss it with the other board members? And, you know, what kind of advisement is there? Because why would the superintendent attend the technology conference? This, I feel, the director of technology should be going to, or someone from her department that is well-versed in technology, and this would be something that a technology expert person or whatnot, I just don't understand, you know, why that's going on. And then there's also, Mrs. Riley did, right before the meeting started, explain to me fourteen point one in regards to the Department of Transportation revisions with WorkNet, and I finally figured out through back and forth that this involves drug testing, not just generalized testing. It's not a driver's test, it's not a physical, it is drug testing, for those of you that weren't aware, okay? And we always paid for the random drug testing that was done. But what I did find out, because it was like very vague, the way this is worded, it's very vague. It doesn't say what it's for, and it doesn't say how many it's for. Well, no, if it's random testing, you don't know. It might only be a couple of drivers per year. What I did find out, that what you're actually voting on is the increase in the fee that is being charged, okay, for each person that is randomly tested, because now the test is more inclusive of other things, which is causing it to go up. That makes sense, but I just think that, again, I don't even know why you're voting on it when it's part of the bargaining agreement that you have to pay, no matter how much it costs, you have to pay. And then the fact that it wasn't fully explained, I think that that wasn't fair to the board or to the public, for that matter, that it was so vague. So I personally think that this should be, when you go to vote on it, that it should be reworded, okay? And state what it's for, so that everybody knows that you know what you're voting on, okay? Now, the answers to my questions?
The answer to your question, Ms. Floyd, I had stated before that we're sending Ms. Riley because she does all aspects in this school, and that's who we chose to go, and that's why she's going.
Okay, so you didn't take it under advisement, you just stuck to your original opinion. Even though there are other things that she could be addressing and doing, the fact is, we have a specialist that works for us, that gets paid by us, that would have a better understanding of what is being presented and needed.
I appreciate your feelings on that, Mrs. Floyd. Thank you.
That's nice that you appreciate my feelings, but...
I'm not going to sit here and argue with you who you think we should send and who we think we should send.
Did the whole board agree on this? Was this even discussed, or was the board just told this is who's going?
This was in the workshop. This was already looked at. We're voting on it tonight, Mrs. Floyd.
It was on the agenda at work session, I know, but my question is, did you decide? Did the superintendent decide? Or did the whole board have any kind of conversation about it? Especially when it was pointed out that the technology director should be the person?
No. You're saying the technology should be the person. That's your opinion, Mrs. Floyd, and you're more than welcome to have that.
I know. I guess it's a common sense thing. Okay, what about the other questions?
Let me see. The board vacancy is, that is part of the executive session tonight.
That wouldn't be executive session material. No, that's public information.
Hi, Ms. Goham, if you could...
Floyd, I'll be happy to respond to that. It actually does fit within the exceptions to the open meetings. And with regard to your specific question, which I think was about the extension of the thirty-day period for advertisement, the thirty-day period is not yet up. However, because there has not been, vacancy has not yet been filled, it was necessary to continue advertising it. One of the things that the board has requested legal advice on is the manner in which that position can be filled, under board policy and also under the school code.
Okay, it's pretty well spelled out, unless you're going to change the policy or the code. I mean, this is something that the public should be a part of the discussion to have, and under, especially the people in Glen Olden.
The only discussion that there is to even reference at this point is that there is not an individual yet to fill the vacancy. There's a thirty-day deadline, as you know, that needs to be extended, and the board needs to have advice from council about how to proceed.
Continue the advertisement and wait for somebody to show an interest. And it would be a board of eight until somebody comes forward. What else can be done? I know if somebody is, applies, is turned away, or turned down, isn't approved by the board, then it would go out to the county, and then the county would make a decision. Well, that's not the case. So what other possibilities are there?
Well, if it's a legal discussion where the board is seeking advice from council, then that is not something that I'm privy to share with you, as you know.
I know. I'm just trying to figure out what the legal aspect is, only because it's a public, it's a public situation. The fact that it was advertised, the fact that the public knows that it's a vacancy, I just don't understand how that falls under legal.
Mrs. Floyd, you're way over your five minutes, so I'd appreciate if we wrap it up.
Well, I'm waiting for the answers to the questions that I asked.
You'll have to come to me after the meeting, and I'll address them. All right? Thank you.
No, it's really not all right, because I used my five minutes to ask the question. It's your time in answering them, not my time.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd.
Okay, eleven point two, the conference that's in Pittsburgh. How come we're sending eight people? Again, why aren't we just sending the people that are hired? It's part of their job. They're the ones that specialize in that type of thing, so...
Mrs. Floyd, we're sending these eight people because this is what the board, Innerborough School Board, is doing. We're sending these eight people.
So...
We're voting on this tonight.
I understand, but...
I can understand if you don't like it, you don't agree with it, you don't...
It's not a matter of liking it. It's a matter of cost. It's a matter of practicality. It's a matter of, did the board discuss this? Because you didn't discuss it at work sessions, so when was it discussed? Was it just put on the agenda, and whoever... Okay, yeah, all right, we'll send them there.
We went over the agenda. There was, nobody asked no questions about that when we were in our session.
Maybe they didn't understand or realize. We do have some new board members.
I do understand that.
And we have some other board members that are still, you know, getting their feet wet, so to speak. So if you don't have discussions or explanations, do they really comprehend what is happening? Because we, the board, when I was on the board, it was also decided to save money, that if there was a conference that you don't have to send everybody, you send a couple, and then they come back and give the information to whatever department or whoever needs it. We have over a two-million-dollar deficit at this point in time. We have to start looking at where things can be cut.
I will take that under advisement, Mrs. Floyd.
The way you did the other thing?
Yes, thank you.
In other words, it's a dead issue to you?
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd.
You're welcome, but taking under advisement is just putting me off. It's just blowing me off. It's not resolving anything, it's not explaining anything, it's not discussing anything with the other board members. I mean, that, to me, if I was sitting up there, that would be an insult to my intelligence, that people think that I'm going to be a rubber stamp.
Again, thank you, Mrs. Floyd, for your opinion. Mr. Evans, do we have any more public comment?
Mrs. Donna Franz.
Good evening, Donna Franz, Glen Olden. I just wanted to thank the board members. I know it's Board Member Recognition Month, and I know what a hard job that it is, I mean, just by observing, of course. And I just want to thank you all, and welcome to the new board members. I appreciate all the time, effort, and dedication that you put in to make our district as great as it is, and I'm proud to say that I live here and went here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Franz. Number five, Mr. Evans?
Motion five point one, that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Innerborough Board of School Directors, held on December twentieth of two thousand and seventeen, be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Next, number six, solicitors' report. Ms. Goham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This month, our office has been consulting with the school district on the issues of contracts, school board matters, and special education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goham. Number seven, financial. Mr. Evans?
Motion seven point one, that the attached treasures report for the month ending December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion seven point two, that fund disbursements in the amount of six million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-five cents be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Number eight, is there any correspondence, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
Number nine, the committee reports. Mr. Chivone, finance meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The finance committee met on Thursday, January eleventh, at seven P.M. in the boardroom of the administration building. We had a couple items on the agenda. First, we looked at the Act One Index for Innerborough School District and discussed the index resolution, which is on the agenda tonight. The board and administration felt that there was absolutely no need to go above the Act One Index of three point two percent. That being said, if the resolution passes tonight, it means that a tax increase levied by this board cannot exceed three point two percent. We also looked at a preliminary budget of the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen fiscal year. Currently, with a zero percent tax increase, we have a total revenue stream of sixty-four million, nine, ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, and see total expenditures of sixty-eight million, five hundred and fifty-two thousand, and ninety-five dollars. This would leave us with a budget deficit of three million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. We are losing five hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars in revenue due to reductions in delinquent, transfer interim, and parking lot taxes, and reductions in grants that have yet to be approved. Increased expenditures and salary benefits and our Piers' contribution are major drivers of the deficit as well. Many of our employees are receiving raises this year, and that has increased our budget significantly. Our Piers' contribution has increased as well. With all the increases in salary, benefits, and Piers' contribution, the line item for salary and benefits increased by one million, nine hundred and seven thousand dollars. We also saw our debt service payment increase by six hundred and ten thousand dollars due to the GOV two thousand and seventeen principal and interest plus increases for other bonds per their schedule. The board, Mr. High School, Mrs. Riley, we will all be working diligently with all directors over the next few months in developing the different department budgets to reduce those numbers as well. But those departments only make up six percent of the budget. We can only get so much out of the department budgets. Other areas in which we may be able to see significant savings are with retirements and our health care costs coming in lower than what is currently budgeted. The current budget reflects a ten percent increase in health care. We also had an update on our bond refinancing that was discussed back in November. Currently, we have not met the savings threshold where we would see significant savings for refinancing, but we will continue to update the public if and when we hit that threshold. We also discussed the timeline of the audit that is currently being conducted. Major and Mastro are in the finalization process now. Mr. High School received a preliminary draft, but not the complete audit. In the next few weeks, we should be hearing from them to schedule a meeting with the audit committee. One of the major reasons the audit is taking a lot longer this year is because the Keystone Opportunity Grant was finalized, and there's a lot of compliance testing that needs to be done with that. The audit committee will meet publicly once the audit is finalized, and that meeting will be open, we will advertise for that committee meeting. Finally, the preliminary financial statements were discussed. All board members had the opportunity to read the monthly department spending, the year-to-date revenues, and the year-to-date expenditures, and ask questions. The committee adjourned, and our next finance committee meeting will be held February fifth at seven P.M. in the boardroom of the administration building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chivone. Nine point two, Mr. Evans, GBO?
Yes, the GBO committee meeting was held on January eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, convened at seven forty-eight. There was a request from the Technology Department for authorization to have the existing facsimile machines replaced with new cloud-based technology. At this time, the committee requested additional backup information on the needs and benefits of going in that direction. Board member Kelly Boyle suggested that the multifunction printers may be capable of providing this service without any additional financial aid. The Director of Technology was asked to investigate the possibility and report back to the board prior to the board taking any action. The Technology Department also requested authorization to contract with Power School for ongoing support. Power School had bought out Sun Guard, the current software provider. This was moved to the agenda for approval. Technology Department also asked for authorization to contract with Spyglass, a firm that would assess our current phone system and make recommendations for combining the three separate systems, investigate opportunities for efficiency, and provide a report at no cost to the district. This was moved to the agenda for approval. The Operations Department provided an update on the heating ventilation system and had previously provided a detailed report of the weather-related failure and restoration work. The Director continues to familiarize himself with the physical plant and assess the condition and age of the various mechanical systems. While the HVAC chiller system is twenty-plus years old, there's currently no plan for replacement, nor was there any recommendations provided in the condition assessment performed by Marotta Main. The department will continue to take steps to mitigate weather impacts and monitor conditions. Snow removal and ice hazard mitigation has been ongoing. All facilities have been open and ready for our students, the impediment being local roads and highways. The committee thanked the department for its rapid response and execution of restoration during the weather-related issues, and the meeting was adjourned at eight thirty-seven. The next GBO committee will be on February fifth immediately following Finance Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Nine point three, I would like to congratulate and thank Mr. McGarvey for stepping up, being our legislative representative. I don't know if you have a report for this meeting, because you were just put on, but if you do, you're more than welcome to present.
No, Mr. President, at this time, I don't have a report, since it was last week that I volunteered for this, but due to the resignation of... I volunteered for this, but due to the resignation of Mr. Burns, I was asked to, I volunteered to do this, and it's important, and I'm looking forward to it. Meetings, I think, are scheduled the second Wednesday of every month, so next month, I should have a report for everybody. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McGorvey. 9.4, Delaware County Community College, Mr. McGorvey?
Yes, thank you. The Delaware County Community College Board Liaison Committee, we met last week, January 10th, Wednesday. One of the topics we talked about was the dual enrollment. Some of the statistics are really outstanding for us. Dual enrollment, new and continuing registered, went up 15% in 2017 for the Interboro School District. I'm not going to talk about the other school districts, but for us, we did very well. Those who continued at DCC directly after graduating from high school went from one student in 2016 to 13 students in 2017. So, you know, I'm kind of proud of that, and we all should be. There was also a presentation on the municipal police academy. There's lots of things going on with Delaware Community College with, you know, the police academy. That was something else, you know, they presented, and, you know, I can pass out the presentation to those who are interested in that. The next meeting is scheduled for April 4th, 2018, and the appreciation dinner, which, you know, we have every year for school board members and superintendents, that's scheduled for October 25th, but that's kind of early right now, so that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. McGorvey. 9.5, DCIU, Mr. Harris?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. It's a little bit cold, but we'll get through this. Yay, spring. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on January 3rd, 2018. The appointment of the following DCI new board members were Ms. Clancy for Rose Street Media School District, Dr. Taylor, Upper Darby School District, Mrs. Watchman, Wallingford School District, Mrs. Fiddy, William Penn School District, Mrs. Maggie, Havreford School District, Mrs. Monroe, Southeast Delco School District. Appointment also was Mr. Harry McOwee of Ridley Park, Ridley School District, rather, for the vice president for the DCI Board of Directors. We also approved a contract between the DCIU and the Franklin Mid Credit Union Federation to be the Delco Hi-Q Quiz Master. I have no idea what that means, but you guys probably know better than me.
We'll look it up.
Approved an agreement with the DCI, Chester Upland School District conducts search for chief operations officer. Accepted June 30th, 2017 audits for the DCIU and the DCTS. Approved a sole-source contract with Game Salad Incorporated. This must be food-related, but I'm not sure. Approved the 2018-2019 Hollywood holiday schedule. For more information and up-to-date news, go to DCIU.org. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Our student reps can be excused now if they would like. Moving on to number 10, personnel, Mr. Evans?
Yes, motion 10.1 through 10.8, that the following personnel actions be approved.
Second.
Movements have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion that the following items be approved, 11.1 and 11.2.
Second.
Movements have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Evans?
Just one quick comment, kind of reverting back to the public comments section. I know as a board member, I was aware of who was going on this trip. It was on the agenda for us to review for work session. If anybody had had any questions about who was going, who's attending, how it was being paid for, those questions could be raised at work session. It is being paid for out of Play to One grant funds, so it's not coming directly from our operating budget. There is funding available for this, so I just wanted to pass that on to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, oh, excuse me, any names? Hearing none, motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Special Education and Pupil Services, motion 12.1, that the board of school directors approve the invoice for student P to attend St. Catherine's Day School for the 2017-2018 school year. Total cost not to exceed $19,250 paid from district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Technology, that motion that the following items be approved, 13.1 through 13.4.
Second.
Movements have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Facilities, motion that following items be approved, that board of school directors approve the US DOT revisions with WorkNet for all non-DOT bus and van drivers for the transportation department. Cost is $75 per person to be paid through district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Finance, motion that following items be approved, board of school directors approve the index resolution not to exceed a 3.2% increase for fiscal year 2018-19, consistent with special session Act 1 of 2006.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Usually, Mr. Eckard would say this, but just so you know, this is not the increase, this is just the cap, that it will not exceed that. So just so you know. Moving on, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Do we have any old business? Hearing none, new business? We can go to our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I do have two quick comments. On Saturday, January 13th, Interboro and Ridley combined efforts with the US Army in the race for hunger. Interboro and Ridley collected 14,714 pounds of cans and non-perishables. All of these items went to loaves and fishes, which stays right here in our community. Thank you to everyone who participated. I think that's an incredible job, and we're very proud of our combined effort on that. On January 9th, we held our third Female Empowerment Night entitled "New Year, New You." Our focus this session was to provide resources that promoted mindfulness, positivity, living a healthy lifestyle, just to name a few. We had over 150 girls and role models attend. I would like to thank Dr. Ekman, our district counselors, social workers, administrators, and teachers that assisted in organizing or participating in the event. I would also like to thank Interboro alumni and our many local businesses who helped to secure or donate the many, many door prizes that we had. It really was a wonderful evening, and I know a lot of the students, our girls, and our parents had a wonderful time, and we are looking to do another one in the spring, and also offering something for our young men, so we're very excited to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. On Monday, February 5th, 2018, a finance committee meeting with the GBO meeting immediately following will be held at 7:00 PM in the boardroom of the administration building. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be conveyed in the boardroom of the administration building on Monday, February 19th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be conveyed in the kindergarten multipurpose room on Wednesday, February 21st, 2018, at 7:00 PM. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Be safe.
Comment?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. ...
Then give us a chance to comment.
Okay.
I'd like to welcome our two new board members. Look forward to working with them in the future, and I want to thank you for your support in assigning me the task of being a legislative representative, so I hope I can do a good job. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McGorvey. Is there any other comments from the board?
Just a quick comment?
Yes, Mr. Evans?
Just wanted to publicly thank our administrative staff, teachers, principals, and all our building directors and facilities department folks for their efforts during the different weather-related issues that we've suffered in the past couple weeks. I know everybody's doing everything they can to keep the lots clear, the sidewalks clear, the buildings safe, and making sure our kids come in when they have to, when it's safe to, and not taking any unnecessary risks for our children, so I wanted to thank the staff for that.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other comments? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.